And happy anniversary. It's always good, one year, that's terrific.
Yep, thank you.
You passed probation, is that what it means when you're one year?
I think so.
Okay, yay.
Five years.
Five years.
Right, good evening, Commissioner Willie, Commissioner Phi, Commissioner Rogers, Tom, Tanya, Mr. Jockers, and we have Chair Harrington joining us right now. Welcome Chair Harrington, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you Clerk Moss. Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, June 28th, 2022 Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors, please?
Thank you Chair Harrington, the Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Clean Water Services Board of Directors and all other county service districts is now meeting this regular session, June 28th, 2022. Commissioner Phi?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Vice Chair Willie?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here.
And Commissioner Treese is excused on vacation.
Thank you. So, first, just to make sure everyone has the latest and greatest packet, we've had an updated packet this afternoon. So, in case you were expecting item six on the consent agenda, that has been pulled. In case you were expecting item seventeen on the consent agenda, that has also been pulled. So, we will have fifteen packets, that leaves us with, yep, fifteen items on the agenda, consent agenda for today. Also, we have some revisions to item F three later in the agenda, and that is under the action section of our agenda this evening. The next item on this evening's agenda is public communication. This is an opportunity for individuals to come share their thoughts with us for up to two minutes. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who would like to address us?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair, we have Claire Morgan. Claire, can you hear us?
Yes, I do, I hear you.
Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Okay, my name is Claire Morgan, since you are representatives of the people of Washington County, I'm asking you to undertake and participate in a plan to develop an initiative for the ballot to carry out support for children and youth in the county. All kids zero to eighteen years need programs to support them throughout their school careers. Working families, especially those struggling to recover from the pandemic, need you and I to provide a remedy for the lack of childcare options for the parents and access for the children to educational enrichment and experiences. As a retired elementary educator, I am acutely aware that schools cannot supply all the knowledge and experience students require to become responsible, productive, and well-adjusted adults. Out of school time, summer programs can help to fill in many of the gaps, plus utilize that valuable after-school time to supply learning activities other than screen time. While teaching in the lower grades, I witnessed parents struggle and worry about the cost and quality of childcare available. I also experienced that same dilemma as a working parent. For these reasons, I support the Washington County Kids' request to have comprehensive planning for kids zero to eighteen and a funding initiative for the ballot that will support children and youth of all ages. Pandemic relief will soon be gone, there needs to be a sustainable funding source. Washington County Kids is focused on ensuring access to quality, affordable, free-as-needed childcare preschool, after-school, and summer programs for our community. Please give voters like me the opportunity to choose to comprehensively invest in the long-term health and well-being of our families, children, and the economy. Thank you.
Thank you Claire. Next, we have Virginia Bruce. Virginia, can you?
If I could just interrupt for a moment Clerk Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan, if you could just hang on to the end of today's public comment period, I will be sharing a status update that you might be interested in. Thank you.
Thank you Chair Harrington. Virginia Bruce, can you hear us, Virginia?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Thank you, I just want to thank the Office of County Council, and in particular, Senior Assistant County Council, Rob Bovet, for his vigorous defense of our right to be involved in development activities and planning in his response to the BG family suit against the county in regard to the Thompson Crossing development. That's it?
Thank you, Virginia. Would any other members of the public like to provide public comment for up to two minutes for the board? I'll give you just a moment to raise your hands. Not seeing any additional hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you Clerk Moss. I want to, on behalf of the board, do everything I can to ensure that folks who are interested in advancing the needs for childcare are aware of the work of the Preschool for All Committee and where we as the county find ourselves at this juncture. So, we understand that the community need, as proposed by the Preschool for All Washington County proposal, that that need is unquestionable. And we respect the and appreciate the work that the committee has put into their proposals to date. Unfortunately, we at Washington County are not in a position to take on the work needed to construct a referral for that proposal at this time. We have a lot of current financial stresses that we're dealing with. The proposal deals with a income tax collection, which we currently have no capacity for. There are internal scoping costs involved that we would need to be able to address. There are also partnership costs, and as such, the board position has remained that we cannot move forward and pursue the internal scoping needed to implement such a proposal. Also, it's important to note that while the Washington County model and scope and their operations work for them, taking that program and just having a similar program does not meet Washington County's needs. And that is what we would have to ensure occurs. So, for these very brief reasons that I've outlined, the Board of County Commissioners is not pursuing a referral of the Preschool for All Washington County proposal at this time. I just want to make sure that for those who continue to press for us, that they have the opportunity of understanding why we're not able to support the request for a November referral. Thank you. Thank you Clerk Moss. Next, we have the consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of fifteen items. Six items under Clean Water Services. Two items under Juvenile, three items under Land Use and Transportation, one item from Health and Human Services, one item from County Administration, and two items from Support Services. What are the wishes of the Commission? We have a motion from Commissioner Phi and a second from Commissioner Rogers. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please provide sign. Thank you Commissioners, any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Had to make sure I got that right. Next on our agenda is Boards and Commissions. And today, we have an item before us for appointing the Advisory Council on Racial Equity. And I'd like to turn it over to Ms.
Amanda Garcia Snell. Latricia Tillman is unable to be here tonight.
Oh, okay, thank you. So, Amanda, over, Ms. Garcia Snell, over to you.
Hi, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'm here to present the recommended appointments for the newly established Advisory Council on Racial Equity. As we mentioned when we came to your work session a few weeks ago, we conducted an extensive recruitment process which yielded nineteen applicants for thirteen positions. The review and interview team consisted of myself, Latricia Tillman, Ashley Horn, and Daniel Navas, Senior Staff Assistant to the Chair. We evaluated applicants through application and interview for a variety of criteria, some of which included things like lived experience of racial inequity, their vision for what true equity would look like in Washington County, and approaches to advising and informing a decision-making process. In addition, oops, excuse me, and so, in your packet, you have your, you have the applications, the redacted applications and resumes, if folks provided those resumes, as well as an applicant summary, which gives you a high-level snapshot, and then more detail in the applications if you'd like that. With that, I would like to read the names of those applicants we are recommending for appointment. Barry Johnson Smith, Zarina Boyce, Eden Lopez, Kenichi Onigusi, Lauren Bulling, Maria Cavia Rubio, Melissa O'Brien, Mohammed Alajiri, Ndogo Kuma, Olga Acuna, Rania Ayub, Susafina Afame Pitorf, and Zakiya Abraham. And we would like to recommend appointment of these thirteen folks to the Advisory Council on Racial Equity.
Do Commissioners have any questions or comments?
Amanda, it sounds like you have a dream team, you have amazing list of group of folks. I'm really excited, the work that they're gonna contribute and look forward to participating in anyway, so congratulations. I know it was a hard decision to narrow down, but I think you've got a dream team.
Go ahead Commissioner Willie.
I would echo what Nafisa just said. The question is, are these, are you gonna stagger these? Because obviously, they're all, you're all coming on at one time. I see you don't have term expiration in the column there, so I'm assuming that you guys have all worked out the variation of how many, who's gonna spend four years, who's gonna do, I don't know, three years, two years, is that, is that what your plan is?
Yes, so in the draft charter, we do have some suggested, I think, three-year terms, I have to double-check, but the plan is to stagger, so some people will do shorter stent so that we aren't renewing or looking for new members all at the same time, and we can keep some, you know, institutional memory as we, as we move through the work of ACRE.
So, I'm assuming the first one's two years, and the shortest is two years, and then they get to renew and things like that. So, I can go to the charter, I apologize for asking you those questions, but it just, I was wondering how you were gonna stagger that.
Yeah, and some of those details will be looking to the committee to inform, so not all of, all of that has worked out, but we know that that needs to happen.
Mr. Carr?
Thank you Chair. Commissioner Willie, one of the things that I'd love to do is to codify this whole process and have it in the Washington County Code, but we wanted to get the committee up and running and sort of get, let them have the impact on that, because I think the entire OEICE organization should be in the code somewhere so that people understand where it is and how it works. So, that's one of my list of things to do in the next few months, is putting together a ordinance that would amend the code to add OEICE, and particularly, this committee, and all the rules about appointment and renewal and things like that, so that it's clear for folks.
Are there any other board questions or comments? Okay, I would like to share a few. This was an incredible applicant pool, so job well done on the recruitment. The applications run, or per the packet prior to this afternoon, ran from pages four ninety-five to six thirty-seven, showing vast educational attainment, vast professional experience, and vast lived experience. These truly are leaders, showing commitment to this effort. I want to thank the applicants for all of their statements in the process. And the, the application that you put together as well, asked a range of questions to help understand where people live, work, their association with others here in Washington County, their knowledge and experience and relationships. I particularly want to highlight a few really powerful messages. And I don't know if my page numbers are going to remain the same, but there was this one statement that started the end of page five seventy-two, that ran through page five seventy-four, and I think every one of us should read it. It's just very powerful about achieving equity in our community, isn't, there isn't a solution without all of us. And the importance of acknowledging the oppression of others isn't at the mercy of our own story, and for us to not pass on burdens, and to positively influence social change in our communities. Others went on to highlight the need to work for better outcomes and greater positive impact in our community. I especially appreciated the different committee applicants recognizing that this advisory committee is a new one, and recognizing that that means there's work to establish a foundation to build on from there. And I think that's important recognition. And I could go on about things that I was impressed by. There was one applicant that was asking a question about wanting to ensure that this wasn't an effort to continue with the current status quo. So, I wanted to take the opportunity tonight in the appointment to say that, in answer to your question, can you trust that we won't be just continuing with the current status quo? The answer is yes, as demonstrated by our appointing members to this brand-new advisory committee, and as just one, that's my answer, as one member of this five-member commission, and I know I'm in good company in, in that. So, in closing, I want to thank each of the applicant members for their efforts in completing this application. For those who are not being appointed at this time, Ms. Garcia Snell, I just want to be careful and confirm, like all of our boards and commissions, these are public meetings. So, if there are members who don't get appointed tonight, who want to be fellow travelers in, in observing and seeing the discussions and the presentations, they're public meetings, so they, they can attend such meetings, right?
Yes, absolutely, and we hope to do hybrid meetings going forward with all the public meetings that we can, and so that definitely helps for people who want to be able to view the discussion and, and provide comment when there's an opportunity for that.
Wonderful, well, once again, just a stellar application submission search, and I really appreciate all of the care that went into the applications and the interviews and screening. With that, do we have a motion to appoint the members as read off by Ms. Garcia Snell to the Advisory Council on Racial Equity? We have a motion from Commissioner Phi, a second from Commissioner Rogers. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand, thank you Commissioners, any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, we'll move on to public hearings, and tonight, we have just one public hearing, and it pertains to A Engrossed Ordinance eight-eight-five, and I know, like all good land use ordinances, I need to ask for a motion to read A Engrossed Ordinance eight-eight-five by title only. We have a motion from Vice Chair Willie, do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Rogers. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand, thank you Commissioners, any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Carr, would you do us the honors, please?
Yes, Chair Harrington. Proposed A Engrossed Ordinance number eight-eight-five, an ordinance amending the Community Development Code to implement House Bill 2001 Middle Housing provisions continued from June 2nd, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Carr, and I'd like to turn it over to the Land Use and Transportation Subject Matter Experts as led by Mr. Stephen Roberts, to take us through staff report, please.
Good evening Chair and Commissioners, thank you. We're here tonight, we're really quite pleased to finally be at the home stretch of adopting an ordinance that's been in the works for quite a long time, and I just want to pause really quickly and just thank our staff, have done a lot of work on this, and I really appreciate those efforts. Our Planning Commission went above and beyond with multiple public hearings, lots of great input, and really helping us to think through this. And of course, the board and members of our community along the way, so we, we do very much appreciate everybody's work on this, and look forward to seeing what the market may bring to us now that we are expanding our housing options for folks. So, joining me tonight, I've got Teresa Cherniak, our Principal Planner for Community Planning, Anne Kelly, I think Anne's actually gonna do the bulk of the presentation for us, is a senior planner in community planning, and Mr. Andy Back, our Planning and Development Services Manager, so after the presentation, we'll all be available if you have questions or comments, and look forward to seeing, seeking this adopted tonight. Go ahead Anne, thanks.
Thank you Stephen, and good evening Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I just, I also want to add that we're very honored to be proposing this ordinance for adoption tonight. We hope it increasingly opens doors for many who haven't been able to afford homes, near family, near jobs they work that contribute so much to our communities, or just who haven't been able to find homes here that are practical for their circumstances. This has been a landmark ordinance shaped by meaningful input from all of those that Stephen mentioned, and we're very grateful for that. Next slide, please. In summary, A Engrossed Ordinance number eight-eight-five proposes changes to the Community Development Code, consistent with State House Bill 2001, the middle housing bill. While the CDC has allowed middle housing in all our urban residential districts for decades, this ordinance facilitates all types of middle housing in greater numbers per site than previously allowed. The ordinance provides related definition standards and simplified, more expedient review procedures. The ordinance also makes some changes that lay the groundwork for middle housing land divisions made possible by Senate Bill 458. We'll bring forward a separate ordinance on associated procedural issues very soon this summer. To summarize board hearings and direction on this ordinance to date, the board considered the original ordinance April nineteenth and May seventeenth. On May seventeenth, the board directed engrossment to make changes recommended by the Planning Commission. The board held its first public hearing on this engrossed ordinance June seventh, and continued the hearing to this evening, June twenty-eighth. Next slide, please.
I think, thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you, so next, there we go. Information provided to you also includes findings demonstrating that the proposed ordinance complies with statewide planning goals, Metro's urban growth management functional plan titles, and the county's comprehensive plan policies. Amendments proposed in this ordinance particularly help implement statewide planning goal ten, which directs us to plan for needed housing at a range of prices and rent levels, locations, types, and densities commensurate with community need. Notice and public hearings have occurred as required with this ordinance process. Next slide, please. So, our recommendation at long last is that the board conduct the second of two required public hearings for A Engrossed Ordinance number eight-eight-five, and at the conclusion of public testimony, close the hearing and adopt A Engrossed Ordinance number eight-eight-five and associated findings. Thank you, next slide. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on the staff report? Seeing none, I'd like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, over to you.
Madam Chair, would any members of the public like to provide public testimony on this public hearing on Ordinance eight-eight-five? I'll give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you Clerk Moss, and with that, I'll close today's public hearing. What are the wishes of the Commission regarding this ordinance? We have a motion from Vice Chair Willie, a second from Commissioner Phi. Clerk Moss, roll call, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Phi?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers? Vice Chair Willie?
Yes.
Chair Harrington?
Yes. The ordinance, A Engrossed Ordinance eight-eight-five passes unanimously four to zero. We'll be adopting, adopting the associated findings with the action items on the agenda, which is next? So, the next item is a, the proposal to adopt the findings for A Engrossed Ordinance eight-eight-five. What are the wishes?
Don't move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second from Commissioner Phi to approve the resolution and order to adopt the findings for A Engrossed Ordinance eight-eight-five. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you Commissioners, any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. And next, we're going to move to a completely different aspect of the county's work, this being solid waste and recycling rate changes. I'd like to turn it over to our subject matter experts, and we have Mr. Thomas Eggleston here, thank you.
Hi, good evening Chair Harrington, Board, I appreciate the time this evening. Mira Sementel is on vacation this evening, so you'll just have me. So, I would like to go ahead and get us started and talk about some garbage and recycling collection rate adjustments. Next slide, please. Quick overview of what we're gonna be talking about this evening, our quick overview of our rate review process, we'll discuss the rate review findings from this year, low-income reduced rate program, proposed rate adjustments, some stakeholder engagement, and a recommendation. Next slide, please. So, a quick overview of our rate review process here in Washington County, it's a ten-step process. We start in March fifteenth of each year with a due date for our detailed cost reports from our certificated franchise garbage haulers. Once we receive those reports, we work with our CPA firm Marina and Company. Once we receive those reports, we work with our CPA firm Marina and Company, and we do a review and review those reports for accuracy, consistency based on historical data and trends. We also pull out a subset of those reports and do in-depth reviews where we do conduct site visits with those haulers and ensure that the data reported aligns with data they have to supporting documentation, invoices, billing receipts, and disposal receipts like such. After we've done those initial reviews, we consolidate our reports and we identify a system-wide return on revenue. We look at the target return on revenue, which is currently set at 10%, and we determine if there any adjustments are needed in our rate process to achieve that target return on revenue. After we've seen what those adjustments might be necessary and make recommendations, we take those recommendations to the Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee, which makes a recommendation to your board, your board reviews and takes action on those rates. Customers are then notified, and then the rates are adjusted for customers, and that happens on August 1st. Next slide, please. So the annual findings for this year's rate review show that the system earned a return on revenue of 12.61%. That is over the target 10% return. You can see when we broke down that earning revenue, return on revenue, excuse me, by line of service, we see the residential is operating at 12.14, commercial 313.5, and Dropbox at 13.69. Next slide, please. This year, we're also proposing an introduction of a low-income reduced rate program. This program was presented to your board at a May 24th work session, and we also discussed this at our June 14th work session. As a reminder, this low-income reduced rate program would offer a discount of 70% off standard residential service for households that earn 185% of the federal poverty level or below and in Washington County, or that currently is $49,000 per year for a family of four, or $25,000 a year for an individual. Our analysis has found that it would take approximately $610,000 in revenue annually to fund this reduced rate program. And we have found through this year's rate review that the residential system has earned revenue over the target ROR that is sufficient to offset this cost in lieu of a rate decrease. Next slide, please. So our proposed rate adjustments before your board this evening are a not, no rate change, 0% rate change for residential can cart services, a 3.9% rate decrease for commercial services, a 4.1% decrease for Dropbox services, and implementation of a low-income rate program for those residential customers. Next slide, please. Some stakeholder engagement. We presented this recommended rate package to the Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee on May 19th of this year. The GRAC voted unanimously to recommend that your board adopt the rate decreases and the low-income rate program. We also this year introduced a interested parties list and notified that list of about 250 community members that we were conducting our rate review and that they had opportunity to comment at the GRAC meeting or at your board's meeting. We have not yet received any comment from the public. We're also very happy to receive support from the Washington County Haulers Association for both the rate adjustments and the low-income reduced rate program as well. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation before you this evening is that staff recommends the following rate adjustments become effective August 1st, 2022. There's a 3.9% rate decrease for commercial container service, a 4.1% rate decrease for commercial Dropbox occasional container service. And additionally, staff is recommending a low-income reduced rate program be implemented on January 1st, 2023 in lieu of a residential can cart rate decrease. Next slide. That concludes my staff report.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on this staff recommendation or this recommendation from GRAC and staff? I would just like to say thank you both to our staff as well as to the Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee and to stress that both these rate recommendations that will be taking action on and the low-income reduced rate program only apply in the unincorporated areas. So the the worksheet for this topic as well as the resolution and order both make that clear. I haven't heard that or seen that represented in the slides, so I just wanted to bring that to life. So thank you very much. What are the wishes of the Commission with regard to this recommendation? To thank you, Commissioner Rogers, a second from Commissioner Phi. So we have a motion to approve the rates proposed by the Department of Health and Human Services as to be adopted by resolution in order. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. And now we're on to our third and final action item for this evening's agenda. Item three regarding an update to the homeless camp removal policy. It looks like I'll be turning it over to Assistant County Administrator Marnie Kyle and our Senior Assistant County Counsel Courtney Duke-Dreason. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Harrington and Board. As you shared, I'm Marnie Kyle. I'm one of the Assistant County Administrators, and I'm here to introduce the action item requesting your board adopt the proposed homeless encampment removal policy. Ms. Duke-Dreason will be prepared or is prepared to provide a short staff report regarding the proposed policy this evening, but I just wanted to take a quick moment to share a couple of items. So I wanted to share that this policy is going to be an additional tool in our county toolbox to address the incredibly complex issues of homelessness. It's one tool along a continuum of services that we provide, starting with management and cleanup of encampments to things like increasing access to shelters, services including mental health services, workforce skills training, and services that really assist people that are homeless and accessing our full continuum of supportive housing services, and we are working to increase the supply of affordable housing. All of this work takes, as you know, collaboration and partnership, including the collaboration and partnership we have with your board, our city partners, community-based organizations, churches, and countless, countless others. The work also involves sustained cooperative cross-departmental collaboration. And what I wanted to share tonight is that I'm really proud of the work that's happening in Washington County. And I wanted to say thank you to all the dedicated staff from across the county departments, including LUT, Health and Human Services, County Council, or Housing Services, facilities, and countless others from across the county organization for their professionalism and their passion to really finding solutions that work for everyone in our community, including the homeless community that we're serving in the surrounding neighborhoods. So I just wanted to take a moment to say that thank you to the staff and in particular, Ms. Duke-Dreason for her work in preparing this new policy for your board's consideration. And with that, I'll turn it right over.
Thank you, Ms. Kyle. Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Again, for the record, my name is Courtney Duke-Dreason, Senior Assistant County Counsel, and I'm here tonight to provide you a brief staff report on the homeless removal camp policy before you for consideration. Next slide, please. So Oregon law requires that all municipalities and counties develop and implement a policy that recognizes the social nature of the problem of homeless individuals camping on public property and ensures the most humane treatment of individuals removed from camping sites on public property. In 1996, the then Washington County Board of Commissioners adopted a policy regarding homeless camping sites in Washington County. That particular policy adopted as 96-193, RNO 96-193, hasn't been implemented in several years, in part due to the 2018 decision by the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit, Martin v. Boise, and also due to the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic in 2020. Nonetheless, in 2021, the Oregon Legislature did adopt House Bill 3421, which made significant and key updates to the statutory requirements of the policy, and that bill was cited into law in June 23rd, 2021. When that bill became law, our old, the Washington County's old policy, previous policy became outdated in a couple of key aspects. Next slide, please. House Bill 3421, as applied in unincorporated Washington County, will require the extension of advanced notice of closure of any encampment from 24 hours to 72 hours. It also clarifies that this notice should be posted at all reasonably identified entrances to any encampment. House Bill 3424, or 3421, pardon me, maintains the requirement for advanced outreach by the Housing Department of Housing Services prior to closure of an encampment. The new law clarifies that when personal property is removed from a campsite, that it must be restored for 30 days in the same community as the encampment site, and it also clarifies and reasserts that any any personal property removed that is not of any apparent value or is unsanitary may be discarded immediately and that weapons, controlled substances, or evidence of a crime is retained by law enforcement. Also notably, the new House Bill increases the number of entities that can store the personal property, increasing it from just the sheriff's office, but also social service agencies or outreach workers working on behalf of homeless individuals. House Bill 3421 also maintains an important provision that allows the waiver of advanced notice of closure in the case of illegal activity or an exceptional emergency. The policy before you this evening, as applied to unincorporated Washington, unincorporated, unincorporated Washington County, pardon me, complies with House Bill 3421. Next slide, please. In closing, I just wanted to touch briefly on how the new policy, if your board should choose to adopt it, will be implemented. This, this, what I'm about to tell you kind of touches on what Ms. Kyle already has provided here tonight. First, since the summer of 2020, when your board approved the Encampment Management Program to increase coordination of services to address public health and safety encampments at encampments countywide, all homeless encampments in unincorporated Washington County have been assessed by the criteria adopted under that program. The health and safety and risk assessment criteria that is applied at encampments under that program currently complies with House Bill 3421. Staff give much more than 72 hours' notice of any closure or cleanup. We arrange multiple outreach contact points with homeless individuals at encampments, and all personal property is stored in compliance with the law. It's the intention that as long as the encampment management program is operational, that health and risk assessment will continue pursuant to that criteria. Second, while the policy before your board today is really just an update of the previous policy to bring it in compliance with current state law, at the same time, the county, county staff is just beginning work under House Bill 3115. This is another 2001 bill out of the Oregon Legislature that provides that any law regulating the sitting, lying, sleeping, or keeping warm and dry outdoors on public property must be objectionally objectively reasonable as to time, place, and manner with regard to the person's experiencing homelessness. This work, like the policy before you, will only apply to unincorporated Washington County, whatever new laws or regulations are proposed for adoption, but that work will be done in coordination with cities inside Washington County for consistency, and also that work will come before your board at possibly multiple times for, for questions of policy. Next slide, please. And that concludes my staff report. Are there any questions?
Go ahead, Vice Chair Willie.
Yeah, it, in reading this, Courtney, it occurred to me that obviously these requirements will cost money to the departments responsible, specifically in this case, the Sheriff's Department, and I guess any other organization where they have to store the personal property or some of those kinds of things. Are we able to use SHS money for reimbursement to those departments to cover those costs?
So Commissioner Willie, thank you for the question, and right now the cost for storage is covered with our encampment program that was approved by your board last summer, and that, that is some, you know, I would, I hate to say it, but I think that's another unfunded mandate that we're going to have to work with your board to figure out how we're going to pay for those services. So right now, the Sheriff's Office is being reimbursed through the encampment program, but those are ARPA limited funding, and so it is a great point that it's something that we'll have to figure out, but it is, the policy is based in the, in the statute, almost mirrors the language.
Thanks, Marty. And so just one more quick question on that. So I know that it costs a pretty good sum of money to go in and clean up these camps, and I certainly, I like the advanced notice of 72 hours. I like the communication that our Sheriff's Department and other organizations have with those camps in advance of that and certainly setting the guidelines. So I like all of that, but there is a cost to that. So isn't that cost paid for by SHS money, or is that ARPA money as well?
So thank you, Commissioner Willie, again for the, in, in a, just a little projection, we're coming to your board on July 12th, I believe is the right date, to provide an overview and the cost to date of the encampment program, the number of encampments we cleaned up, the cost of those cleanups. But it is a partnership with SHS, so SHS funding can't be used for the cleanup. So it's not used for the assessment. It's not used for the cleanup, but we are using SHS funds for the outreach workers that are coming to the camps and talking about the program that are working to try to get people into other situations and shelters and out of the camps and any navigation into permanent supportive housing or into shelters. And so the SHS program has those services, and we're utilizing those services, but they can't pay for the cleanup of the encampments.
No, I think Commissioner Willie's asking a great question, and why don't we just leave it as to find out? They'll find out.
Yeah, I completely agree, and I'm sorry, I don't usually like to come out of the clear blue sky and ask these kinds of
It's a great question.
Things, so.
And we'll be going over all of that on July 12th.
We can verify with Metro as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Good question. Are there any other board questions at this juncture? What are the wishes of the Commission? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Phi.
I think both Commissioner Rogers and I are unmuted, so I can go ahead.
No, that's, that's my mistake. I should have muted.
I had a question, Courtney, if you don't mind, just running through the implementation of this updated policy and, you know, what would be different if this is implemented as of what's current now? Because when I was reading, one of the things I was concerned about is, you know, the idea of telling people to believe when they have nowhere to go.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Phi. I think that the intent would be that not much will change with what we've been doing since the decision in Martin v. Boise, meaning that case from the Ninth Circuit said that you can't criminalize homelessness if you don't have alternative shelters. So since that time, we've all sort of taken a step back and So, since that time, we've all sort of taken a step back and, you know, reevaluated how we address homeless encampments. And with your board's support, I think we've been doing a pretty good job under the Encampment Management Program. Nonetheless, so I, the intention is, is that will continue, that this policy probably and hopefully won't be relied on really at all, except for the case of, I believe, an illegal activity at an encampment or an exceptional emergency. Thankfully and luckily, luckily, we haven't really seen many of those and none, to my knowledge, and Ms. Kyle can step in on Washington County property. We, we did have some concerns on some, on another property that we got a lot of calls about. But, so the intent would be that things will continue status quo. Nonetheless, we wanted the policy updated because, one, it's required and our, the previous policy is outdated, and two, we did think it was important to have, you know, if we do run into something that requires more immediate response, we would have the policy in place.
Yep.
Commissioner Rogers.
Okay, unmuted. Thank you. Well, first of all, Courtney, congratulations. I understand you had a little change in title and I'll, I'll mention that to my wife as a fellow Lakeview girl, so she'll appreciate that. I know you guys have talked before. My question on this specific item is that how does this apply to private property, unincorporated, I understand? Where maybe there's some occupation that either is not known by the owner or the owner wants to do something different in a very short period of time. But is this still the same on private properties as on public property?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Rogers. No, private property is completely different. A private property owner would have a private right of trespass. And I couldn't tell you all of what that would involve, sitting here tonight, but it, different rights as a private property owner.
Okay.
So, Commissioners, seeing no further questions or comments, what are the wishes with regard to approving this resolution in order to adopt this homeless camp removal policy? We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers. We have a second from Commissioner Phi. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously for to zero. Next on the agenda are board announcements. Before I get into the reading off the usual forward meetings, I just wanted to thank the Commission for the discussion that we had at work session this afternoon about the Tri-County Planning Board. At long last, the leads from the four governments were able to meet in a Zoom call at 5:30, which is one reason why I was a little rushed getting into this meeting. I rushed, had to rush home from work and so on and so forth. So, anyway, thank you again. Metro will be taking care of talking to the proposed folks and making announcements. So, onward to the meeting calendar ahead. So, we have no Board of Commissioner meetings next week. Everyone have a wonderful, short holiday week. We do have three sets of Board of Commissioner meetings. As, as per our usual, we have an extended work session on Tuesday, July 12th, starting at nine. We have our normal two sets on Tuesday, July 19th, work session at nine. Then pausing that for a board meeting at 10, reconvening work session at one in the afternoon after lunch. Then on Tuesday, July 26th, just like today, we'll have our work session at two in the afternoon and a board meeting at 6:30. And we will be having our monthly roundtable on Tuesday, July 14th, starting at 9:00 a.m. In August, another summer month, we will not be having meetings the week of Monday, August 15th, which means no Board of Commissioners meetings on Tuesday, August 16th. That leaves us with three sets of meetings as well, just like in July, with Tuesday, August 2nd, the pair work session at nine, board meeting at 10. Tuesday, August 9th, extended work sessions starting at nine. And then the, I think it's the last Tuesday of August, nope, the fourth Tuesday of August, August 23rd, we'll have the pair, just like today, work session at two in the afternoon and an evening board meeting at 6:30. Those are the calendar, the Board of Commissioner calendar announcements I have for tonight. Are there any other board announcements? Seeing none, I wish everyone well as we kick off summer. I'm grateful that we're not having a heat dome right now like we had last year, and I wish everyone well. And I'll see you at the, what did I say, the July 12th set of meetings. Good night, everyone. Take care.
Chair Harrington, motion to adjourn the meeting?
Oh, yes, thank you. We have a motion from Vice Chair Willie and Commissioner Rogers. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Passes unanimously for to zero. Good night, everybody.